Let's call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Nice job driving, Lynn. And everybody stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then we just want to say happy birthday to Matt Gouchberg, one of our board members.
Happy birthday.
Do we get to sing? No, we're not going to sing.
You can add that to the agenda at the appropriate time, but it's not on the agenda right now.
No, it's not on. I don't too. And approval of the agenda.
Any?
Some votes.
Oh, thanks Liz. Can I have a second for Adrian? And do we have any discussion on it or anything we'd like to? Okay. Public input and announcement. Oh, yeah. Can we have a vote for the agenda? Sorry. I'm a little out of it. Apparently I should've stayed home today. All right, we're good. Public input and announcement. I don't have anything emailed to me. Did you have anything? Anybody else have anything? Okay. Moving on from Matt. So approval of the minutes of eight seventeen. We'll do them separate. Okay, and do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor? I'm going to abstain because I was not present this semester. Okay. So vote. Okay. And that's with Sam and Andrea abstaining. And then do we have approval of the minutes for nine seven?
So moved. And I will remind the chair that after we get the second, we have to ask for...
Oh, yeah, that's discussion. Yep. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion on them? Any edits, changes?
There's one strange highlighter marked between ten and eleven, for what it's worth.
Okay. Is there? It's like a stray enter got highlighted. So it's within a stripe of yellow.
It's just a stripe of yellow.
I don't have it on mine. Okay, all in favor? Good, and Sam and Andrea will abstain. All right, I think we have some new student representatives.
Absolutely.
All right.
Kaylin, do you want to talk a little bit about process and reaching out and identifying? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, well, so I met with the senior student body and the junior class and offered that up. I also put it in our advisory information. And Sydney was willing and I really appreciate it to be on it again. And we didn't have junior or seniors interested other than Sydney, so I put it out to the sophomores in both team and Preston. We're excited. Preston, you know, several times to ask about it. So then I met with them the other day and I'm going to go over it and here they are. We're lucky to have them.
Yeah, welcome back Sydney and welcome Dane and Preston. Do you want to say something real quick about yourselves? Introduce yourselves.
Well, my name is Dan Grover. I'm a sophomore. I live in Wallingford and I just thought it'd be a good opportunity to get on the school board and advocate for some students who, you know, who can talk to their friends about ideas about school, but might not feel as comfortable talking to staff about some ideas like that.
Fantastic.
I'm Preston. I'm Preston Flanders, also from Wallingford. And I just thought getting on the school board wouldn't hurt, I guess. Sounded like something fun. I also like being in the community and putting myself out there, so.
I'm Sydney. I was on the school board last year. I wanted to do it again just because I like how to hear everybody's ideas and to bring it to you guys. So, yeah, and I'm a senior.
Any updates you want to give us about the start of the year?
Do you guys want to start?
It doesn't bother me.
I'll just start with open house. There's an open house on the 29th this year from six thirty to eight and that's where students and their parents get to inventory, I guess, with teachers about their classes. And that's on the 29th from six thirty to eight again.
I don't care.
You can do the PSAT one.
And this one?
Yeah, you can do that one if you want.
PSATs are going to take place on Wednesday, October 12th, for sophomores and juniors during the school day. And that day seniors will be using the morning to work on their common applications for colleges, their essay resume building for their other colleges and career-related things.
And then we have two more. So getting ready for our road ahead is an event that Guidance is putting on for all seniors and juniors along with families on September 29th from five thirty to six thirty where there's a panel of discussion about college and career topics. And there will be information provided about important dates throughout the school year. They also have provided food. And then homecoming is next Saturday. And then Monday is our first spirit week, first, like, spirit day for our school year. Homecoming is for high schoolers and it's on Saturday, October 1st, from seven thirty to 10 with the proceeds going to our senior class. But our, we have a bunch of different activities planned for the whole week or so we've kind of come all come together, like our senior class. Some of us, we have gathered our ideas and put, come up, just we came up with a bunch of different fun things to do and to support our school, have school spirit back, so.
Awesome. Does anybody have questions for our new student members? Are returning student members put them on the spot or give them a break for a month?
I'd like to say thank you for volunteering. It's great. Thanks. Welcome you.
We had talked a little bit about scheduling and format so that we can get as much great feedback as we can from our student members. So Ms. Thompson and I had discussed every other board meeting, having the student members come. I know students' lives get really busy, especially with extracurriculars and things like that. We'd also discussed setting up some running meetings so that you're not just coming to the board meeting out of the blue, but you've had an opportunity to work with the Mill River administration and work through things so you can share with us some of how that work is going, if that makes sense. Is that...
Yeah, and we've talked about them brainstorming ways to meet in different settings with the student body. So whether it's through advisory, they go into advisories and just hear feedback from students or if we call classes down to the auditorium. So I put that on them to sort of brainstorm how they want to meet with students and then we'd meet after and talk about, you know, next steps on whatever they heard, so.
So hopefully, awesome that we've got student members willing to participate, but hopefully even more meaningful participation than we saw even last year.
Thank you, guys. Arts update.
Hi, everybody. I prepared a little handout because I'm just going to share a little bit today about all of the arts offerings we have pre-K all the way through 12th grade. My name is Kristin Simonetti, Fine Arts Coordinator for the district. Also Shrewsbury Principal, a few hats. But tonight I'm here just as the Fine Arts Coordinator. This role has really grown. Over the course of this past year, I've been working really closely with Jody and with Brian to make sure that we're aligning all of our curriculum from pre-K 12 and making sure that our programming is equitable and high-quality district-wide. So we're going to talk a little bit about what we're currently doing and the amazing opportunities that our students have to experience the arts. I'm going to talk a little bit about how many students are electing to participate in performance arts and visual art. And then we're going to talk a little bit about how you can experience that yourself this coming year.
Liz, do you want to speak now or after?
Yeah, can I just jump in and ask? Kristin, did you share that with us via email?
So I did. Like, just before the meeting started, I, like, put the handout in a body of an email to the MRUUSD Board email address. Oops, sorry.
Thank you.
I should've had my students have the handout.
I have mine.
You have your handout out.
Thank you.
I don't know what you guys want.
Thank you.
Hard copy or... So I'm going to start right off talking about our elementary arts programming. We have visual art and music for all pre-k to sixth graders and we have 100% of our students accessing this programming. We have general music classes that run usually around 40 minutes and visual art classes that run 40 minutes weekly so that students are, I think I can send those to you electronically later, okay, that are accessing that programming every single week. We have high-quality art educators and music educators in our district at the pre-k six level and they take lots of opportunities to demonstrate their skills and their techniques by displaying their art throughout the building as well as a winter concert opportunity, a spring concert opportunity, and usually some sort of like sixth-grade graduation move-up night celebration where, you know, all those pre-k three-year-olds are going to pre-k fourth, 44-year-olds and the pre-k'ers are graduating into kindergarten. And so there's usually some sort of town school cultural event in which students can demonstrate their art and music skills and techniques. And our community is really arts-minded. So our families are really supportive of their students. I have comments all the time as a new role, as a principal at Shrewsbury. I feel that, like, how can we have more visual art classes for our students during the week? How can we have more opportunities for students to experience music? They're just very, at least in my particular town, but I'm hearing that from other elementary principals too, that our families are really vested and our communities vested in getting our students authentic and meaningful arts opportunities even when they start as little three-year-olds, all the way through sixth grade. So just as you see here on my, our program is very typical of any elementary school that's around the state in the sense that we have those 40-minute general music and visual art classes. What sets our district apart is that we have third through sixth-grade students having access to chorus and fourth through sixth-grade students access to band and instrumental lessons, which is a pull-out program where they learn techniques on their instrument and they have rehearsals every single week. And our students are really voting with their feet. They're electing to take this, which is not required, but it's something that's above and beyond. And so we have, every elementary school is a little bit different, but we have anywhere from 35 to 55% of our student bodies electing to participate in band, chorus, or both. And as a district, we are constantly encouraging our students to sing and play and to develop their visual art skills. We have a really incredible event called Music in Our Schools. Kaylin hosted it last year with me here at Mill River Union High School. All kindergarten through sixth-grade students get bused to our school to see kind of the music offerings that are happening at Mill River and they get to come up here with the big kids and practice all day and perform pieces all together on the stage as a big band and a big chorus. And their community members and parents are invited. And one of my personal goals as Fine Arts Coordinator is to try to have a similar event. I'm starting to talk to some professionals in our district about having an event that would celebrate visual art and theater as well, kind of in alignment with what we were doing with music in our schools, but to be able to celebrate those other two art forms as well. And all of that, all four of those elementary experiences feed into Mill River 7th through 12th grade. So at our middle school, I just have a little population stat. At the top there, we have 381 students, at least. That was the last count that I was given from Guidance and 249 of them are high school and 132 of them are middle school. So what's been really exciting is in the last couple of years, we've been able to add some middle school programming where we have two sections of like a general music, music appreciation class. We have two sections of visual art and we have one section of middle school drama. And students are going to be able to access those, hopefully, once, they could have multiple of them, but they're definitely going to have arts offerings in their schedule, both seventh grade and eighth grade. So a middle school student could be taking band and chorus and a semester of music appreciation, a semester of visual art and a semester of drama, all in one year. And then have the opportunity to come back as an eighth grader and have parallel curriculum that's not repeated, but just further exploration of those topics, their eighth-grade year as well, before they're going to be going right into ninth grade where they're electing to have those specific classes. What's exciting for that, about that for me as the Fine Arts Coordinator is that students sometimes don't always know what they're passionate about or what they want to pursue. And I think this is a really great way to, like, really expose them and get them to kind of really dive in to be, I really want to pursue more visual art classes when I get to high school. So I definitely want to communicate to my Guidance Councilor that this is a priority for me and when I only have so many, so much time in my schedule for electives, I definitely want to make sure that I have room to take my painting class or my pottery class. Or I just absolutely love theater and I want to make sure that I can get into Mr. Bruno's Stage 40 class during the school day because I want to make sure that I'm developing my acting skills and I can really make sure that I'm a strong actor for him in the Stage 40 production after school. So I think that that middle school offering is really, really cool and sets us apart as a middle school program to other programs that we have in our area. We also have our performance music classes. So we have the seventh-grade chorus and the eighth-grade chorus. They rehearse by themselves, but they come together in the big junior chorus to perform at the concerts. And we have auditioned vocal ensembles. So we have a treble ensemble, which is vivace. We have a changing voice ensemble, which is cantiamo. And we have seventh-grade band and eighth-grade band that rehearse by themselves, but perform together at the concert. And then there is our Jazz Lab developmental jazz program, which is actually not auditioned. It's come one, come all. Any instrument can participate in that. And Mr. Roach does an incredible job, like, developing improvisation skills and really developing confidence for students to be able to solo right away. And it's really sometimes hard to remember that, like, you're only 12. You're in seventh grade and you're out there with that trumpet, like, soloing on the stage. Our high school music offerings are also unique in the sense that we have our, the Castleton University's Music Theory and Aural Skills One class offered here at Mill River. I've taught it in the past. I've been able to pass that baton to Andrew Luce. He is a master's-level teacher. He has his master's degree in jazz trumpet performance. And he was given all the green light by Castleton to be able to offer that four-credit class that meets here at Mill River during C Block. And our students get four Castleton credits. They use their dual enrollment credits to get that here. And that is part of the very rigorous requirements that students have to fulfill in order to get a music endorsement seal or sticker on their diploma, something that is very unique to Mill River Union High School and other high schools in this area do not have. We also have that for visual art. Wait for that, that'll be next. And so we also have a music history class, which is, it's a semestrized class, which is a great class that many students that even don't participate in our performance music program just dive into and they really love, like, the history of rock and roll. They love to see how music has evolved over time. Mr. Roach also teaches that and it's really engaging. And we have a similar performance program for chorus at the high school where we have a come-one, come-all chorus. It meets right in the beginning of the day at A Block at the same time as our band meets. And that enables our students to be able to go back and forth and be double performers and play in the band and play in the chorus and sing in the chorus. And we have a jazz band and a very elite jazz combo, which was just started last year. And we also have the Tempo Tantrum Soprano Alto Vocal Ensemble, the Clefhanger Tenor and Bass Vocal Ensemble, and the most elite group we have here vocally, which is the Chamber Singers. You'll most often see those Chamber Singers, like, performing at the homecoming game, the National Anthem, out at the edge of the football field. They also go around our community and sing singing Valentines. And it's a really, really great ensemble that is a great ambassador for our school and for excellence. We also have two incredible visual art teachers here at Mill River. Karen Swiler is also shared with Clarendon Elementary and JT Jonathan Taylor is here at the high school. And we have very specialized, high-quality art classes here, all in the categories of pottery, painting, drawing, photography, 2D design. And then they also specialize in something called the Senior Showcase where they're putting a huge presentation of their art over a period of time together on display at an art show. They also have to write written pieces, explaining their process and giving the, you know, the audience or the viewer an idea of where their thought process and their artistic process is coming from. And they also are super accommodating for students with independent study classes. And those classes are able to be taken for honors credit and there's also AP art opportunities as well. We had many students successfully submit AP art portfolios last year. Both of our music department and our art department have honor societies. So we have the Visual Art Honor Society and we have the Triumph Music Honor Society. Both of those honor societies focus on academic rigor and community service. And you have to be a member of either of those in order to graduate with that arts endorsement on your diploma. So there's a specific set of requirements that you have to complete in order to have the visual art endorsement, including that community service and academic rigor, and the same for our music department as well. Our theater classes are a little bit less offerings because we share our theater teacher with our English department. He is a fabulous English teacher who also teaches our theater classes for us. We have one middle school drama, which I talked about in the beginning, having exposure to middle school drama. And students both in seventh and eighth grade can access that class. And then we have the Stage 40 class, which is an academic class on, you know, theater skills that meets during the school day. Our extracurricular theatrical productions are divided between Stage 40, which is our high school production team, and our Stage 20, which is the seventh and eighth-grade production team. There's one Stage 20 production every year on Mother's Day weekend. It's usually the second weekend of May. And there are two productions for the Stage 40. One is coming up in November, sometimes as a musical. This year it's just a regular play. And they also do the One Act Festival, which is basically the timeframe of January to March. We've hosted the One Act Festival here before. I was able to go see the One Act Festival at the Paramount last May, March and it was really cool that the students, even though they didn't do the regular competition that they've done in the past, they were able to watch each other and then be able to give each other feedback in a green room after all three plays were performed for one another and with an audience. It was a really incredible experience and I hope they incorporate some of those aspects of that as they bring that back, the traditional One Act Festival this year. So as you can see, we offer so many opportunities for students to dive in. I think that it's really important to note that here at Mill River, when you are a visual art student or a music student or a theater student, it's being part of something that you belong to. We talk all the time about how we are a music family, about how we are learning skills in our music classes and our art classes and our theater classes, about showing up and dressing up and being on time and being a team player. You cannot succeed in a chorus unless everyone is succeeding. And so there's so many transferable skills that students learn by participating in these classes. And it's really just a place where they feel successful and they have relationships that are being built along with the rigor of really, really high academic standards happening at the same time. And I think it's really incredible to note that about the national average of, like, high school students who vote with their feet and elect to do any type of theater, art, or music classes, about 10% in our nation, about 10% of students will be like, yeah, sign me up for that art class. But here at Mill River, music and art are hovering right around between 33 and 35% of our students are participating. We have 82 students in the music suite A Block every day. And that's a lot when we only have 249 high school students in the building. And I think it's really incredible and it's such a, it's a tribute to our music educators, tribute to our arts educators. It's also, I really feel that it's because of the support that you as the board and the community is constantly giving us, telling us to press on and to keep, you know, raising that bar high and having our students be able to meet that bar. And they really are. Every day they come in with a positive attitude and wanting to leave that classroom better at their art form than when they entered that classroom. So it's really a unique culture that we've created here in our greater district, but especially here at Mill River Union High School. And I'm really proud of it. I could brag about it all day long. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you. And I also would love it if you experienced it for yourself. So one of the things that I worked on this year is I kind of coordinate with the elementary principals, the schedule. The December concerts are getting decided right now. And I also have coordinated with Kim and Kaylin and the arts teachers and Peter Bruno for the theater to create a huge Google Calendar. In the past, it's been this big Mill River calendar of events where we share students. Our students who are vocalists are also on the football team and the cross-country team and the soccer team and we share everyone. And we're trying to give students the opportunity to do everything with as minimized conflicts as possible. And so Kaylin and I came up with the idea of, like, making a master Google Calendar. So now it's not only on a Google Doc, but everybody can just see it and have access to that. And we can try to avoid conflicts the best we possibly can. So coming up on Thursday, October 13th, is the Showcase Concert. If you come here to Mill River, I promise you there'll be standing room only. And you'll see one piece from every performance music class that we have, seventh through 12th grade here in the auditorium. That's the first thing that's coming up. We have a big Stage 40 production coming right before Thanksgiving, November 17th to 19th. And then our art show and winter concert are back-to-back, Wednesday to Wednesday in December. So those are some opportunities for you to see arts here at Mill River. And those calendars are going to get developed from our elementary principals real soon for those winter concerts in December at each of the sending elementary schools. I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions for me about fine arts here? I know I'm a fast talker. Sorry.
You had, I think it was cantiamo, the changing voices. What does that mean?
Yes, okay. So at Mill River, we actually don't classify any of our voice classes by gender. We classify them by voice part. So our vivace ensemble is for sopranos and altos. But as we, as the biological change happens, we have tenors moving to basses or, like, sopranos moving to altos, moving tenors and basses. But we also have students, no matter what gender they identify, be able to identify what voice part they are and participate in that.
And did exactly what you said, changing voices.
They're changing.
I thought maybe, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Kristin, I'd like to say that some of the group names are fantastic. I accidentally exaggerated tab, but like clefhangers?
Yes. So those were student, when we moved, when I came here in 2010, we still had women's ensemble and men's ensemble. And so over the course, I kind of left it that first year, getting my feet wet. And then that next year, the students voted on those names. So the Tempo Tantrums and the Clefhangers were born. Yes, were born in, like, 2012 and they've stayed ever since, like those collegiate a cappella group names, right?
I want to commend you. So folks in this group may or may not know, having an arts designation on your high school diploma is very, it's something of which to be extremely proud. And when students, I'm certain that was a student-driven thing. And when students, you know, want to achieve that level of learning and want that designated on their diploma, that really sets them apart for jobs, for college acceptance, just for anything that they're going to do. So that's something that I noticed that is really very impressive. And then I just want to point out to my fellow board members that one of the, because I already put all the concerts on my calendar, the winter band concert and art show, we do have a board meeting that night. So maybe we could, you know, make it such that we can have our board meeting and maybe all go to the concert. So thank you, Kristin, for talking to us tonight.
And if you think of anything that you want to just discuss further, please feel free to email me after. I'd love to, you know, have a conversation and sit down or ask any further questions if you're like, oh, I really wanted to ask for this and I forgot on my way home. I'm just an email away. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll throw two things in real quick before Kim gives her update. We had talked about data and we had talked about data not just coming from me. And we're starting down that path of bringing different folks in front of the board to start hearing about that data. And I think it's awesome because Kim and Kristin and the leadership team, we were talking about this last week, what does that data look like for sports or for the arts? I think it's worth noting that Kristin gave you two types of data. She gave you enrollment data compared to national averages. 10% of students in high school tend to enroll in arts programs. We have 33 to 35% of our students in... We have 33 to 35% of our students enrolling. I think that's an important data point. And I think that is not lagging data. That is data that is showing us that we have a program that's working now because kids are signing up now. And as the program gets better, enrollment goes up. We don't have to wait five years. So we don't see a lag in that data. So I think that's worth looking at. If you come to some of these events, you've probably come to past events. That's data too. That's observational. You're seeing the hard work that our students are pouring into these programs. And that is absolutely not lagging data either. That's leading data. You're seeing students performing and there's, I think, no better data for the success of those programs than that, if that makes sense. So, sorry, I just wanted to be a data nerd for a few minutes.
Can I be a data nerd and ask a data nerd question?
Yeah.
Do we know if, for example, nationally, because I mean, I suspect this is the case and I suspect there's, that shows that there is a positive correlation between literacy scores and students who participate in arts programs?
So the research that I have seen and the writing that I have seen on that, it's a, there's a relationship, there's a correlation, and people have had a really hard time drawing causation. So it's hard to say the music program does this to your literacy scores. But as you see stronger arts programs, you do tend to see stronger literacy. And I even think research is probably stronger about, I think, spatial visual reasoning, that kind of thing, like stuff they'd ask you on an IQ test versus maybe just a straight reading test. So there's definitely correlation, but I can't get in front of you and say, if you put a music program in that's strong, your reading scores will go up. I don't think it's that, that simple or clear. But that's a good question.
If I could add though, I don't have the data in front of me, Liz, but there's a lot more data about students feeling a sense of positivity about attending school, that they have relationships with their teachers, they have relationships with fellow students. And it's, it's much more common to see just general success and graduation rates because students are involved in arts programs. May not be correlated to academic, as you said, correlated, but maybe not proven. But it's more about a sense of belonging and a sense of feeling like they have a chance to succeed.
Yeah, which definitely, definitely matter a lot. Good question.
I did share this with the board as well, if you want to pass one down. I don't know if I have enough for everybody. But I'm going to talk about high school, middle school and high school athletics. And we do have our elementary AD here as well. And she'll talk to you guys about elementary fall athletics that's happening. So first, I just want to start out by saying, all of our coaching positions are full for the fall, which is always great. I always feel like in years past, I've come to the board multiple times with contracts that need to be approved weeks into the sports season. But a fun fact, we have eight coaches who are coaching this fall season who are MRU alumni and nine who are part of our MRU staff or have just retired. So I think that's great. They want to come back, they want to give back to our student athletes and continue out of the classroom after school. So you'll see my number and Kristen's number is a little different with the power school number. This I pulled off today. I'm sure some seniors have been pulled for early college because their numbers don't count towards our enrollment. So you'll see, as Kristen stated, we too have about 35% of our student population participating in athletics this fall. And I kind of broke it down so you could see how many for what sport. We have five students from outside schools participating on our sports teams this fall. And we included a middle school golf team this year because we had some interest in the past, but just to grow that program even more. Jojo Valente, who's the golf coach, wants as many people to participate in golf as humanly possible. So, you know, it only says one, but we did have some interest after the season started. But it's such a short season that it's tough for kids to just join two, three weeks into the season. I did break it down as well into female and male count for Mill River. So you'll see 187, 188. And participation between female and males in sports. So this fall, we have 55 students who are females participating, which is 29% of our population. And we have 77 males, which is 41%. I went back in my data to 2017 to show you fall numbers of student athletes who have participated, along with enrollment at Mill River during that time. I know there's been a lot of perception out there of how athletics at Mill River is dwelling and there's not kids participating. But you can see the consistent participation rate of 37 to 35% from 2017 until today. And our enrollment has declined, as you can see, from 2017 to 2002, but participation rate has stayed the same. So I thought that was a good data point for you all to see with comments that have been made in years past about participation. Just to let you know what some of our coaches have been doing this summer. Coach Bendig, who's a varsity girls' coach for soccer, held community drop in sessions for anybody on Sundays. And those are attended about 12 to 15 people every week. A lot of alumni and current girls' soccer players attended those. Coach Emma Weatherhog, who is our ultimate frisbee coach, also held drop in sessions. And I think those have moved to another location, but they're still happening for the community to do that. Coach Lee Timinsky, who's our wrestling coach, held open mats for community K through 12. So we had wrestlers in doing that. And he'll continue with a couple more sessions until wrestling starts in November. As you know, we hired a whole new football staff for this fall season. They all came on around January or February and workouts started shortly thereafter. And we had about 15 to 20 student athletes attending those three day workouts. Dane is part of the football team. He can probably attest to some of that. And it's, it's really nice to see the pride that that whole staff is taking within that program. And you can see it spilling out into the other programs and the other teams. And I, I don't know if Sid or Dane or Preston, but this, the sense of pride, I think, is coming back into the building slowly, but I feel like it is coming back. And it, you know, it does help that our head football coach works in the building as well. So he's here visual. So that was really exciting and is really exciting to continue to see. This week, our varsity girls' coach and varsity boys' basketball coach have started open gyms until the season starts in November, as well as our varsity softball coach and middle school coaches, who will now be our JV coaches, are going to be doing pitching for seven through 12. So you can see that coaches are investing their time outside of their seasons to be here for student athletes. And now it's put back on the student athletes to buy into what they're putting out there for them to get better in the off season, because that's how our programs are going to get better. You can't just play a season and not pick it up until the season starts again. So Sid talked about homecoming. We have a whole slate of games on Saturday here at Mill River, starting at 10 and going till 4:30 with middle school football closing out the day. The booster club is always looking for help. If anybody has any extra time in the concession stand, Wendy Savory is the president and you could reach out to her. Just some things we're doing around to improve. The softball and baseball dugouts are currently being repainted, as well as the concession stand. And then the plan is next year to repaint the press box and the football locker room that's right outside the music suite. And I'm really excited because I've had a scoreboard sitting in my office since June. And Tim Hart, the new buildings and grounds coordinator and I, he's working directly with me and things are going to be starting to be dug next week for that to be put in. So.
And he's only been here eight days. Today was day eight.
Yeah. So I'm really excited about that. It probably won't be up for middle school soccer this year, but it'll be, definitely be ready for the softball season in the spring. So looking ahead, winter sports sign up, I know fall has kind of just started, but winter sports sign up is going to open on Monday and close December 10th, with the winter season starting November 28th. And you can see I have listed anticipated coaching positions that we will need to fill, depending on number of students who register. I have a varsity baseball job that was posted and has closed and interviews will start shortly with those. And then I've just kind of put some big picture goals. And I, I foresee some of these coming to light now with, with our moving in the right direction. So you can see replacement of a varsity baseball backstop, it's about ready to fall over. Bringing in new material for our baseball and softball fields, our varsity fields and middle school. I know I had a conversation with Brian about elementary possibly taking over baseball and softball again, instead of them using rec leagues. And if that was to happen, this is a necessity for it to happen because they would have to play here. I have been doing some research on our bleachers that are outside on the main field. Although they are structurally okay, there are some things that are still falling off of them. So I would really like to see them go away. And if anybody has been to Otter Valley High School, they have concrete seating within their field and you can sit within their field. So we have a huge hill right here that it could go into. The space is there, so that's obviously a project Tim and I and buildings and grounds will need to have a discussion about. And then always upgrading our athletic fields, varsity field obviously being the priority, top priority. And that's just sitting down with buildings and grounds and Tim and just making strides forward with that. So we've got a lot on our plate and I know Tim is only eight days in, but just going to keep, keep putting stuff on. Because like I said, it's a sense of pride that these kids want to be out there and play on these fields that are playable and that we, that we care their fields are lined and we care that the fields are mowed. So I just, continuation of that, I think it'll just bring it all together. So if you have any questions on the high school part, I can answer those now. If not, I can introduce Brittany and she can talk about our elementary fall athletics programs.
You may not have the answer at the moment, but the current 36 to 40% average enrollment for sports, is that kind of trend nationally?
I think so. Kristen and I also, a couple of years ago, did student athletes who participated in athletes here at Mill River and theater and/or music. And that number was over 40, closer to almost 50.
I was talking to some states, some music state representatives and they were like, I've actually never heard of, they were basically like, we've never heard statistics that high of athletes and like musician performance music being aligned like that at such a high like rate. Like if you come to the homecoming game, there's going to be two football players with take their helmets off and run out to the arc for chamber singers to sing the national anthem. You just don't see that other places. It's really rare.
Yeah, so we talked about this at our leadership meeting last week, but trying to get that number again to see where we're at. Again, the enrollment's not as high as it was a couple of years ago when we did it, but I would guarantee it's around the same number.
It was at 45 when we did it.
Yeah, it was right below.
And but what's nice is that it's, you can see the alignment is still here. It's just that we have to continue to build after COVID.
And I, I wonder regionally, you know, because we were talking and I think I even shared with the board, like this idea, South Burlington can't field a football team, you know?
Which is rare.
Larger schools, yeah, larger schools are having to partner to actually form teams. So I wonder, wonder if you could easily reach out to some regional ADs and see what theirs are looking like?
Absolutely.
That's a good question.
Any others? All right, so Brittany Blanchard, who is our elementary AD, is going to talk to you about.
Hi, everyone.
Mill River graduate.
Yep.
She's one of the eight team fall coaches that I talked about. She also coaches our middle school soccer team.
Yep, we just won today, so that was great. All right, so overall, we have 68 players throughout the whole Mill River's district. 33 is three through fourth grade and 35 is five through six. So we have two boys and two girls teams, one for each group. We practice at Clarendon twice a week. And our three fours through the Rutland rec program, so they practice twice a week. And then on Saturdays, they'll go to CSJ, which is now the Rutland rec, and they'll play Saturday. Our first game is Saturday. And that goes through the end of October. On our five six, we practice two days a week and then we have games two or three days a week. And they practice at Clarendon as well. We just started our first game yesterday, which was great.
And they play those games here?
Yep.
At Mill River, the five six.
And then looking forward into the winter season, so basketball will hopefully start like late December, early January. And we're currently looking into have a fifth and sixth grade girls' team and then a fifth and sixth grade boys' team. Both teams do need a coach, so if anybody's interested, please reach out to me. We're also interested in having a three four team, possibly looking through the rec like we're doing for soccer, but hopefully we can just do local teams and then we would play here at the middle school gym. And then that's all I have. Any questions?
Do you have, do you have participation from all the schools?
Yes, so it's, she was very willing for Clarendon and Intimit and we also have a few home schools to kids.
Oh, I know. Good, good questions.
We ran out of jerseys.
Yeah.
Like I just ordered 100 jerseys for third grade through eighth grade, so they all have the same jersey. And we don't have any left.
That's great.
It's always a good thing.
Kim, is that a booster function?
No.
Local budget?
Nope, local budget.
Okay, just a reminder to all of the board members, but we can throw my name to that
Awesome, thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is.
Sorry, are folks comfortable with our athletics, our arts folks scooting out for the evening?
Students?
Oh, yeah.
If you guys want to stay, you can stay.
You can stick around or you can, you can head out. Totally up to you.
There's no judgment.
Yeah, no, you guys. Homework is more priority. So it's up to you guys that way. But yeah, everybody.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You with us?
Sure.
You know, somebody, you know, sports practice. All right, so next on the agenda is board member attendance. And I know that this has been discussed for the last three meetings, which I was not in attendance of, but my so gracious vice chair has filled me in every morning about six o'clock. So I don't really want to touch on it too much because I know that it's been discussed. I'm just asking that if you're not going to be, like Bruce has emailed me and told me that he's not going to be able to. Adrienne has emailed me and said that she's not going to be here the first of October's meeting. All I'm asking is either reach out to me or Matt, because, you know, Matt can have these emails too and he'll relay them on. Just let me know if you're not going to be able to make it to a meeting. And then, I'm a pretty open person, just tell me if something is going on. Like, I'm sorry, I have not told you guys, my fellow board members, what was going on, but I was not able to walk for a week and a half. So just open communication, please. And if there's going to be another, you know, any further discussion or anything like that, I think it needs to be brought up in maybe an executive session, personnel or something that's where we as a board can pull together and speak to each other in itself. Next.
The same is true for committees, right? If you're not going to make a committee, contact committee chair.
Every committee has a chair and every chair of those committees should be known if, hey, I'm going to pick on Josh because he's not here, I'm stuck in the cornfield and I can't get there. Or my car broke down and blah, blah, blah. Just be, please have the communication of letting the chairs and, you know, everybody who needs to know, know that you're just, you know, hey, I'm not going to be able to make it. I gotta go to emergency family thing in Bermuda for two months or whatever, you know? Or I'm in South Carolina for six months.
I need one of those family emergencies.
Yeah, no kidding.
I might not tell you if I'm doing that.
Yeah, I know. That way we won't call you. But like when Len goes to South Carolina, he openly tries to attend via video and stuff like that. And I mean, we all kind of know now with the routine and stuff, but if there's a complete emergency, just please, all I'm asking is just. if there's a complete emergency, just please, all I'm asking is just please communicate. I'm not going to bite your head off, really, because I may not be here sometimes too. So that's all I want to say on that. I don't want to do any more unless and we will pull executive session if we need to discuss more. Okay, inclusion statement.
So the, where we had left that last meeting, there should be something in your materials that has that sheet again that's got the statements of inclusion. And where we left that last meeting was that we were going to try and combine two of them. Because we saw some good parts in the proposal from a district resident. And we saw some good parts in that last statement from G.W. Elliott School of International Affairs. So the last one on there, and I can present this up so that folks are seeing exactly what I'm talking about. The last one on there. There it is. Okay. This was my effort at trying to combine those two. So this was what was provided in your materials for the board meeting tonight. I might be able to make that a little larger on the screen. I don't know that I can make it much larger.
Oh, it is. Look at that. Oh, there we go. Never mind, I got it. Thank God, because I couldn't read that.
Were we looking to bring this to a vote?
Tonight, I believe that was the idea.
That's what we talked about.
So if I reflect back on last meeting, and I'm open to correction, there's one sentence in the newly crafted that is still protected by state and federal laws. Not that we can't include it, but the section that says, "To that end, we uphold culture of inclusion to welcome" that whole section, origin, marital status, income, wealth, sexual orientation, family status, veterans. No matter what, the school, anything that is protected by state and federal laws.
Yes, that does, we did talk a little bit about, you know, why, why do we need something like this if we have to follow federal law? And we are committed to following that. Yeah, we did have that conversation.
So I've read it both with and without that sentence.
I think it's nice to include it so that people that don't necessarily know all those rules know that that's included in our inclusion statement. I mean, I could be, you know, I know, probably most of the people here know, but all of our kids don't necessarily know that. And I think that's one, you know, a big group of the people that we're directing this to. I mean, that's just my opinion.
I think one thing we, we said too is it's one, it's one thing to think it, it's another thing to, to read it. And when it's out there, you, you're being held to a higher standard of it. I think that's one thing we talked about as well, so.
Pretty explicit.
Can I ask, what are we going to do with it?
Yeah, and we, we talked about that a little bit. It will likely be on our website somewhere. I don't necessarily think this is something that we post in every classroom. We could have a conversation with our leadership team about it, but I think it's, I think it's more something that's for for community awareness, if that makes sense.
I'd like to see it in each school in a prominent location as you enter and you read it. So that the first thing you, one of the first things you see when you enter a building is, this is who we are. Know you are welcome here.
And we do have visuals that, that mirror our board policy on equity that we should be seeing when we walk into every school. This could be something that goes right there with that.
You can make a pretty plaque and have one in each school.
I'll, I'll let the board answer that, technically.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I've been a little bit absent from what's been happening locally, so I just, this is the first time I'm seeing this and I'm just wondering, did I hear you say that there was community input and were students involved?
There was a community member who brought that one, if you can see it, I know it's kind of small, Stephanie. There was a community member who brought that statement to the board and asked the board to adopt an inclusion statement. And that was probably in the spring of 2020, is that?
It was like in July or August of last summer.
Yeah.
Just go over your.
Yeah, I'm not aware that there's been any student input.
But that is why we have student representatives on the board. Move this along, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this tonight.
I'll second that.
Andrea, you're opening discussion.
Discussion, please. Sorry, I had, it was my thought going in my head and forgot about everybody else.
I'll say one other thing, Stephanie. One thing we did do after we received that statement from a district resident, we looked around to find other statements just to see. And it's, they tended to be pretty similar anywhere you went. So that, that was how we approached it, rather than getting a lot of input to craft something from scratch, if that makes sense.
So I have a question in regards to your comment about student represented. What was your?
Were students involved?
Yes. Did you want them poll or want them to be able to see and have an opinion on it?
I, I was asking the question really to understand how deep this has gone. So it's one thing for the school to develop a policy. But it's another to really have students embracing it. So, you know, same thing with the statement. It's one thing to say something, but it's another one to really have that buy-in and support. And so you can say whatever you would like to say. It is not going to mean that that is what is embraced by the community. And, and so that was my thought. I will comment, I, I'd like to see all the various categories spelled out because it does say, that's me, that's where I fit in. That could apply to my situation. So, so it was really just a question to understand, is this work being done only within these walls or has it been shared?
And I think, if I can add to that, we talked about this at our last meeting too. This is one, one very visible piece, but small piece. And this better not be the only thing we're doing. That, that this is work we're committed to on a daily basis, you know? And that this was the board level piece of making it visible that we're doing the work. Because yeah, if we post this on the wall and that's all we do, well, what good was that? So I, I think that's, that's absolutely important to highlight, you know? We, we have work ongoing daily. You know, some of it interacts with that federal law where when there are instances of hazing harassment or bullying, we look into them appropriately and we follow those procedures. And there's also proactive work we're trying to do before that. You know, Kristen spoke about students feeling a sense of belonging. And I think it might seem like a stretch, but I don't think it's a huge stretch for Kristen's work to be a part of this. She talked about the vocal groups and just how the vocal groups were named. That they, they, students didn't feel included necessarily because it was the women's choral group or the men's choral group. So I think that's work that we better be committed to, to doing more than just posting this piece of paper.
So before I go to Liz, while I still have my thought, I, and I know I've missed some stuff, I'm fine with this, but going back to a few points and Stephanie's point of student involvement. And then Kim and Kristen's point and even Brittany's point, a little bit like, are we're actually getting the pride back? Our students need to be involved in this before there's any sort of approval of anything. Because if I was a student here and then I wasn't involved and that was all of a sudden on the wall when I walked in, I'd be like, why wasn't I a part of that? I'm the one that has to read that every day.
Yeah, fair enough.
So, on to Liz. Sorry, Liz, I had to say that before I forgot. You're muted.
No problem, good chair, well good. I just wanted to, you know, I have the regional board meeting packet in the background and a really strong message from the, the FDA annual meeting was how our work impacts student outcome. And so with that in mind, you know, it could be, you know, oh, sorry, I keep biting my tongue, something to which we hold ourselves. And so I just wanted to add that piece. I wanted to kind of connect it to the regional board meeting I attended.
So are we?
We're in discussion.
So, so much like we discussed two weeks ago in the last meeting, and Len just brought it up, without having designated, what are we going to do with this besides posting it as we walk in the building, putting it on a website? Those are great. And you echoed it with, these are things we do and live on a daily basis. It's still hard to say, this is what it looks like, this is where it's going to live, this is how we're going to follow it through. If you don't have that listed, what do, how do I know this is what wants to be included in it if I don't know what the picture is?
Could I speak to that? Sometimes you need a starting place. And we've been talking about this for close to a year and we haven't gotten to that starting place. So perhaps we adopt an inclusion statement. And then we work to, for one thing, do an art installation in all the schools, perhaps include the inclusion statement. But it gives us a starting place. And I'm, I'm really quite nervous that if we put this off again and say, well, we're not sure what we're going to do with it, we maybe should talk about it with, with all of the players. That's not something that's like written in stone and we can never get rid of or that we can't adjust. But if we don't start with something and say that we are committed to living this, then where do we start? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm serious, because I mean, we have been putting this off for a very long time.
Well, and I, I wonder if we're overthinking it, you know? This is a statement.
Right, this is what we want to be.
And, and the board adopting this, the board then makes this statement official. You know, it, it, in my mind, it's not about where we put it or what we do with it, because we're doing that work. This is the statement. I mean, think about like Declaration of Independence. Well, who cares where that document went after they signed it and made the statement? It was the statement I think that mattered. And I think when you look at organizations, schools, town of Clarendon, folks who have done this work, I really think it's that visible statement. We better be doing other work, but this is, this is not to make the other work possible or this is not a culmination of the other work. This is a statement that stands on its own. At least that's, that's how I look at it when other organizations have adopted inclusion statements, if that makes sense.
Can, can I ask?
Independent of other things that we do.
Do we currently have a mission statement?
Our schools have mission statements that vary from school to school. We have some, we have some statements at the top of our board goals document. They're not clearly labeled mission statement or vision statement, but we have some statements that do, I think, get at that direction on our board, board goals.
Just because, you know, I'm thinking this could be, to me, this is very much a goal to which at least we as a board should aspire, you know? This is a value that we, you know, hold dear and hold one another accountable for. I think we expect that of one another and, you know, our faculty, staff and students. And so, right, you know, as far as what are we going to do with it, well, it's a starting point. So I also think the newly crafted statement is really very well done. And I, I think it's an important mission for all of us.
And we will be doing work all year around strategic planning, getting feedback from students, getting feedback from staff, getting feedback from the community to really clarify what's our vision, what's our mission. We are casting wide nets to try and get as much engagement as we can on that work. In my mind, that's very separate. This is a statement that the board is going to make. This is not a collection of feedback from a lot of different sources and something we've come up with collaboratively. This is the board's statement of commitment to this. Does that make sense, kind of that difference, that distinction?
And if I made it that end, you know, something like this is something that we can go back to. When an issue in that list or outside of that list, as we learn about all of the different things that make individuals the complex beings that they are, we look at that and we go, right, like we have said that these are the things that we believe. If that's not happening, if that, if your staff isn't feeling like we're delivering on it, if the students aren't feeling like we're delivering on it, then they can point, like that's what you point to this to and you say, that decision, you know, I heard your conversations about it, doesn't feel like that statement is there. And then it's up to us to go, you know, you're right, we haven't included that group or it feels like a long list, I know, but there's more to be added to it. And I think that that's a helpful look back on and a reminder, right? We're all coming together to say, we, we, I love hearing that this feels almost, we shouldn't even have to say it, right? That feels really good. And it also feels really good to look at that and see the places in yourself where you're like, I'm so glad we're standing up for that. And reminding, there's things on that list that I need to remember that I'm also representing. And I think that that's a good, you know, it's a value statement. It's going back to that and going, if I'm making a decision, when I'm voting for something, when I'm talking about something, that's one of the pillars that's holding me up as I'm thinking about all of this and I need to be reminded of all of that and having that out there somewhere. Yeah, it's going to be on a wall and it's going to be lived. And it's going to be something that we can go back to the minutes and have and pull up when we're doing our board goals even, right? And we're doing all that stuff and keep going. And yeah, it's not set in stone, unless we carve it in stone, that could be an art installation, I'm sure. But, you know, it's living in the sense that it can be changed to suit our needs as we need and we're going to, we are living it. I'm glad to hear that we are. So I'm not going to end transition, so I will stop talking and see the floor.
I'm just saying that I'm not comfortable adopting it until students get a chance.
Fair enough.
So I, it's good, I like it. And I can definitely see it being a project that maybe our design students work on, trying to get it on the wall or something, but I'm not okay asking for any of that unless our students have had at least a chance to read it and say, yeah, I agree with that, I'm okay looking at that every day.
How would we do that? Because I could see us approving it.
And all I'm asking is for two weeks.
No, no, what, what I was going to say was, we could send that language and say, this is what we are thinking of approving. Please comment, you know, put it out in TAs or whatever.
Yeah.
If that makes everybody feel better. Well, I know, but he's not going to speak for the whole student body, right?
Yeah, I think as a.
I know he's not, but.
I think we're, we're working on right now finding out how we can get to a body of students. And yeah, I think we could put this out to TAs or I could, we could find ways to get students together and talk about this. find ways to get students together and talk about this, because this is re, this is really meaningful.
My, my question then is, are we giving this to students and, and asking them, hey, the board is going to make this statement, are you okay with that? Or what are we asking students to do?
I think the way that it needs to be presented is at TAs, because they do have the time in one of the blocks to have, where the kids can, one of the block days, and I can't remember, they are in their TA if they're not pulled back for something else. And I think it's the, you know, present it to the TA teachers and say, could you present this to your students, saying, this is what the board has worked on with community members and everything, and they want to bring it to you about being the inclusion statement, and get some feedback.
Yeah.
And if you could give some feedback on what grade levels you're thinking?
Seven through 12.
And, and I guess I'm...
And then that way we have, I'm just, I'm, that way we have something.
Well, I, and I want to make sure that we're, we're understanding what we're trying to figure out from students. Are we asking for feedback, like, yes, this is good, no, this isn't? Are we asking for, do you like the wording? Do you want to change the wording? Because, you know, it can become a whole can of worms depending on the question we ask or not, you know? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Matt?
I am, I would never want to take a voice away from the students. I never would. I mean, I, I think that defeats what we're even doing here.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, you know, this has been going on for 13 months. I'm partially to blame for the fact that it has been going on for 13 months. My only fear is if we send it out to TA, send it out to the school, we're really going to open up a can of worms. And I, I don't think it's going to be a two-week turnaround on this. I think it's going to turn into another couple of months.
Could I also ask one thing? I mean, at some point, the school board is, I won't say the, the, the boss of the kids, but I, I mean, I, I really don't think that. But sometimes, you know, we write policy, and we don't ask the kids whether they agree with it.
No, but we're not posting our policies on the wall.
They're posted wherever the kids want to see them. I mean, they are, they are there.
Can see them, but...
And possibly, if you put this out to the TA, the kids that are most disenfranchised, and the ones who are most afraid to speak out because they don't feel that, are the ones that won't speak out and won't tell you whether or not that's something that should be on the wall. I tend to agree with Matt, that this could be a not such wonderful experience. Might be, might not be. Sometimes you have to say, hey, this is, this is how it's going to be in this school, because we're, we're, we have the rules, you know? We're, we're setting the rules. And just like we do policies.
I think it was, I think the most manageable approach, in, in my mind's eye, in terms of engaging students, which I, I do like that idea very much, might be, read this statement, you know, do you support this? Yes or no? And, you know, rather than asking for feedback, I think that could be really overwhelming, but just, a yes or no, you know?
Liz, if I can, is what we've done, if we have no's, that's going to be really hard for kids from historically marginalized communities in that room.
We wouldn't, I don't know that we would, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's just that, like, so...
Response should be confidential.
Okay, so, but we're talking about discussing this as an advisory, and within a two-week basis.
Form, everything go to one person, and just get a bottom number, yes or no?
I mean, if I may, perhaps another method can be that, you know, the board has said this, this is how we believe that we should be operating, this is what we throw our pens about. And is there a way to frame this in that mode of, you know, instead of asking a scary question, like, do we support this, yes or no? How are, how is this, how are we doing at this? Like, what is an example of this that you have seen that we're doing? How could we do better at this? Or even, how could I, as a, I'm going to be a student, what's a way that I do this? And what's a way I could do better at this? And what's a way the, the adults in the building have done this, an example that I've seen of it, an example where it could go better? Because it's kind of, the way I see it, we are giving a charge to kind of go down into our community. We're saying, we believe in this, and we want to see this played out in our, our lives. And I totally agree that the folks who are living it should get a chance to look at it, live, and live with it and breathe with it and say, yes, I can see both ends. Because we're certainly, this is the work, we don't get to go, did it, done, nailed it, never have to look at it again, right? This is definitely ongoing. It's never going to stop, unfortunately. And I think then we can get that feedback. And if there is a way to collect it, great, like, that's gold star, awesome, slam dunk. We can see, wow, we are really feeling a disenfranchisement amongst, folks are really noticing X, Y, or Z, or this came up a lot, wow, we heard about this incident in that way. And I think that that's the level of engagement versus a governing body that can be effective and actually create change.
And I had a thought, and I lost it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine. I had it in the middle of the...
We'll come back.
Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, any more discussion? Because I lost my whole train of thought. Um, all right. I don't think I'm going to get it back either. I really, well, let's just bring it to a vote. Um, all in favor of adopting their inclusion statement?
I think...
Oh, wait.
Suggest a roll call, just in case.
Yeah, I'm going to do a roll call. So Liz?
Fine, yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Len?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
Nick?
I'm going to abstain.
Matt?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And I am voting nay. So, with that said, our next is figuring out where we're going to put this.
And we can absolutely get this in front of students. Absolutely.
I think the students need to be involved, and where we're putting this and how it is designed, so that it is be seen.
I would like to say one thing. In my opinion, this inclusion statement does not need to be set in stone, as we said. I mean, it can always be a, a working thing over time, so.
Ah, now I have my thought back.
Yeah.
But anyway, too late.
And we do still have, kind of wrapping up that conversation, we do still have a date on the books in October, where we're pulling students in to try and work on a project, some sort of art project, where we complete that sort of second half of what was that, the ad hoc committee work.
Oh, yeah.
So that piece is still happening. And Jody, we were just chatting about what was the date on that the other day, and, and we remembered it was sometime in October. So we are still doing that work to engage students in trying to make our, our schools more welcoming.
Um, annual meeting, the VSBA annual meeting and the...
I think I'm debriefing on that.
Is that you or Adrian?
I think it's me.
You didn't go to the annual meeting?
Nope, you didn't. I think it's Adrian.
Oh, my, I'm excusing, but these are the meetings.
No, no, no.
No.
It would be great if Liz could report on the regional meeting. I had a question about the annual meeting.
So, let's do your annual, and then we'll go regional.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I don't want to lose the report on the regional.
No.
So, the annual meeting is coming up towards the end of October. At that point, the VSBA board and, and puts forth all the, the changes that they want to see. One, they did some changes to bylaws, they have resolutions that have been submitted and vetted, but all of the resolutions then come up before whoever is attending. And every school district who belongs to the VSBA has a vote. So my question was, is anybody attending the VSBA annual meeting? I am, because I'm on the board. So, I mean, one of my questions was, do I have to pay for it? I will if I have to, but I'd love it if the school district pays for it. Not staying overnight or anything, just the annual, the admission. And then we need to find somebody who will be there and will, will vote for us. You know, I mean, obviously, we can direct that person to vote whichever way we want, but somebody has to actually be there to submit the vote.
What's the date of the?
I think it's the 20th, 20th and the 21st. It's a Thursday and Friday.
It's the 20th and the 21st.
Thanks. And the business meeting happens on, on the 20th, 20th.
I would love to, but I can't.
So Adrian, you're not physically going to be there?
I am. I'm going over to Lake Maury, and I'm going to stay there. But I'm, I'm, I'm not presuming that I'm going to be the voting person, because it's up to you guys. I'm...
I vote to be the voting person, because I would love to attend, but I cannot get off work. And I love Lake Maury.
No, it is really nice.
We go there all the time.
I put the, the conference hyperlink in the chat. It is, is it in person?
It is in person.
Yes.
They didn't have it in person for the last two years, but hopefully it'll turn out better than the, the first, you know, our, our first actual live meeting where three people ended up with COVID and other people got, we don't have to do that again.
Well, so, I, I, I put two things in the chat. The second link is the annual conference agenda, if you all want to.
So Liz, not everybody is on the hybrid link?
So, do you want me to email it?
Can you email, please? Yeah. Because I don't have, I'm not on that.
Good point.
Well, Adrian, coming back to an earlier question, what has been the precedent on reimbursement for going to the meeting? Because I've only been...
Well, it, what's funny is, in past years, and I'm not sure why this changed, I haven't had a chance to ask the executive director. I can ask her tomorrow morning, because we have a, a meeting. But we have, they used to give admission to districts. So you could send a number of people. This year, it's by, by the person. So I'm assuming Brian's going.
Yep.
And I don't know who else wants to go.
I'm in the same voters. I won't be able to get out there.
So, so in the past, and I, I can look, but in the past, if we paid a district amount and we could bring people versus now you pay per person, we kind of paid for the board then.
Right. There was usually at least one board member, sometimes two, and, and the superintendent.
So I would like to...
I wish I could go.
I mean, are you looking for a motion, Adrian?
It is very interesting. Excuse me? I, I mean, I'd like to know whether that's, you know, board members are allowed to ask for, for reimbursement for things that are done on the school's behalf.
I would say we're standing.
Asking for reimbursement of the board.
So I think it's important we support that, because the resolutions that we, well, that are adopted, which I will send out as well, the draft resolutions, the resolutions that are adopted at that meeting, they have statutory implications. So it's an important meeting, so I do think you should be reimbursed.
I mean, the, the purpose of the resolutions is to, is to, to give the VSBA direction when they lobby the legislature. So if you don't like the, you know, the resolution, they're going to be lobbying the resol, you know, that, all of our legislators, in that direction. So we should speak up if we don't like something.
Don't we have a policy that says that board members can be reimbursed for, there's something, some...
There is something, but I don't know how it's done. That's why I brought it to you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
That seems like a no-brainer.
Well, yeah, yeah. I agree with that.
And I don't know if it's in policy, but I know it's, it's reasonable, and we've, we've reimbursed those expenses before for board members.
I swear I've read it somewhere.
Right, like it's tickling.
Maybe it might be in policy.
Like, I think it's a, it's a policy. I believe it's in there somewhere. Because I've read that.
So are we looking for a motion for who's our representative going to be?
First.
Then a motion for approval to reimburse that cost?
Right. And I would say you'd probably reimburse the person who's going to represent us.
Yeah.
Whether it's me or somebody else, it doesn't matter.
That's reasonable.
As I said, I'm going, because I'm, I mean, I was on the resolutions committee at, you know.
Have you, how long have you been the representative for us? How long have you done it?
Um, two or three years.
Have you?
Tammy has, Tammy was our chair before, and she, she used to go and vote. Because there's also the visbit, I think it's visbit, business meeting for the insurance trust. So somebody has to vote, somebody has to represent us there, too.
I would like to make the motion that Adrian be our Beadham River representative at the annual conference at Lake Maury on October 20th and 21st, and that we reimburse her, or that she's, yeah.
For, just for the entrance.
I second that.
Whatever the expenses are.
And then another motion for reimbursement for her.
Well, Liz's, Liz's motion as it stands is for both.
For both, okay. So I second, and then do we have discussion or any more discussion on it? Sorry, I have to stand up, you guys.
Don't do it.
Um, all in favor of having that?
Unanimous?
I'll abstain.
Okay, we're good.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
All right.
And then we'll have to have a conversation prior to the meeting on how, what our stance is on the resolutions.
Yep. So Liz, do you want to do regional?
Sure. And I'll do that really quickly. And Andrea, I'll have you know, part of the reason I stay home is so I can stand.
Sorry, I'm just gonna, I get really uncomfortable.
Yeah.
These chairs are terrible.
So, all right, so I attended a good department regional meeting, not the annual meeting. And I sent everybody the board materials from that meeting. And page 11 has really interesting resources. My immediate thought was, man, I want to read this stuff right away. And I won't be able to until probably next summer. But I am going to try to read some of those resources, because it's, it's professional development for us as board members. Page 12, page 12 included governance standards that I think we ought to use to inform the work we do, and shape in part our goals. I had a note to bring up the annual conference, which we just discussed. Adrian was elected as our regional representative, and thank you, Adrian, for serving in that capacity. And that's really all I had. If anybody wants me to resend that email, so it's at the top of your inbox, I'm happy to do that. And I sent the things that I put in the chat. So I put the annual conference, I sent you information about the annual conference, the week on the 20th at Lake Maury, and I sent you the resolutions that will be voted on. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Um, okay, bus van contract?
Yes, I'll give a quick update there. Tim Hart, as you heard, day eight today, he's getting up to speed on a lot of things. Met with him and Nicole Peterson, our transportation coordinator, on Monday. We discussed what the board had allowed us at our last meeting, which was to explore a purchase or lease of one van and a purchase or lease of one bus. Traditionally, we had done two buses every year, so we ran that past the board at our prior meeting, and they are soliciting bids for those, for one van, one bus. So we're working on that. We don't have anything yet. We were, we were wondering if we'd be able to get anything in time, and we haven't quite gotten there. So that's the update for that.
Okay.
Someone on the same topic?
Yep.
The one stop in Rutland?
Mm-hmm.
Is that to pick up tuition students?
Probably, it might be, well...
There's some Rutland town kids, the one in CDS, there's some Rutland town kids that come. And I think one of our students is dropped off, one of the shoe spray students, I'm not sure if she's doing it again.
We could also, we could also be picking up students who are traditionally residents, but their housing has become unstable. So various reasons for that. Tuition, maybe.
Or they could be living in the district, but were originally students in Rutland, but are now, now qualify as homeless.
Yeah, basically, you know, which, which encompasses a lot of scenarios that actually don't come to mind when you think about that. They could be staying with a relative. So there could have been, you know, flooding in, flooding in a home, and they can't be in home, you know, while it's being cleaned out, they're staying with relative, you know? Takes a month or two.
You could have a couch-surfing senior. You're staying with a friend in Rutland, but he wants to get to school.
Separated parents.
And we actually have, we have Title I federal funding.
Separated parents.
Yep.
Yeah, and we have.
So, you know, it, it comes with a stigma attached to it sometimes, but it can actually be some reasonable things that happen to all of us. We have federal funding, Title I funding set aside for that. So we actually have grant funding that can cover those scenarios, because you go, well, gosh, you could have kids all over the place that you have to transport. But we do have... Cause you go, well, gosh, you could have kids all over the place that you have to transport. But we do have grant funding that supports that. If that makes sense. Good question. Yeah.
All right. So on to committee personnel.
Yes.
You're on, Lynn.
Oh, um, next meeting's October 5th, I believe it is.
I think that's right.
At six o'clock. And I will get the agenda out. My computer won't let me access anything.
And I think we'll be light on hiring.
Yeah, should be. And I'll, I still wanna check on that superintendent evaluation as well.
Absolutely.
Like I say, right now my technology is.
Did you get a new computer?
Yes.
Okay.
But it won't let me.
But it won't let you do anything?
It won't let me access Microsoft Word documents unless I buy.
I was gonna say, copy.
Bring it by, we'll help you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be able to translate them without.
Well, suppose, well, I won't get it away.
Bring it by, bring it by.
We do have an I T.
Yeah, I know.
We have a connection.
Lynn, Lynn knows B J well.
Yes, I do.
Has already met on computer issues several times.
Resurrected one.
Okay. So is that, um.
That's it?
So policy, we met last week. Um, and you're gonna have to help me out with this one, Jody. Somebody. We went through F three, F 12, F four, and F eight. We have very busy policy meeting. So I'm going to, we have, what do, I'm trying to remember.
So F three, you're bringing to the board, our first read for revision.
And then the other ones we're waiting on because they're signed for Warren.
There were two for revision to bring to the board tonight.
And then two for.
And then two for reduction.
Yep.
Okay, so F three. Does everybody have a chance to look at, have their, look at that one? So this is actually, yes, we're bringing for first read because we finally finished our edits. I'm gonna sit for this one. So. Where is my thing here? I just wanna pull it up while I'm still.
So for the full board, we, um, we spent a lot of time just looking at the, the S B A model policies and just specifically working to better align our policies to the model policies. So overall, the two that we have for first reading, uh, we have better aligned to the updated versions of model policies. And the two that we are bringing to you tonight for rescindment, we are bringing to you tonight because they are not model policies. And the policy committee discussed the fact that because they are already under higher level law, state or federal law, we don't feel that we need them at the policy level. Is that okay, Andrea?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. So let's go one by one. So let's do F three, search and seizure students, um, by school personnel. And I would make a motion to adopt this first, this version, this first read of the policy.
I'll second.
Adrian, second. Um, any discussion on it?
Do we, the, the stuff in italics at the bottom. Do we do that?
Hmm.
We do not do that currently. This, this policy says may.
I know. That's why I was a little, I was surprised. Cause I was like, will we do that?
It is not in our current. So students, you know, do a parking slip. We just treat, we right now treat cars like we treat any other personal property that we would never go to search unless we have reasonable subs- so, la, I can't speak after.
Suspicion.
Suspicion.
Cool. Thank you. Glad to hear it. Um, any other discussion? Any other questions? All right. Um, all in favor of F?
Unanimous?
I can't see.
Yep, unanimous. Um, and then I'm gonna jump to F 12. And I know it's non discriminatory mascot and school branding. This we pulled directly off, we just adopt, wanna adopt the V S B A, um, version that they did. We don't wanna edit anything. Right now, we just wanna leave it as it is. We read through it and it seems pretty self-explanatory and something that we definitely wanna look at keeping the way it is. So.
We went back and forth a handful of times saying, hey, what if we tweak this? What if we tweak that?
I, yeah.
And we ended up conceding back to the model policy because, uh, there's a lot of but ifs. And if the V S B A or if the state changes something in this policy, we have the ability to say, we followed the model policy.
And if they change something, we also have the ability to say, nope, we don't wanna do that. Now we're gonna tweak what, the way we want it to follow Mill River. So.
And, and maybe worth noting, we are required to have a policy by January 1. Whether it's the model policy or one of our own design, that is a requirement, uh, which is a little different.
Qualifications though? Do we just have to have a policy or do we have to have a policy that they approve?
Uh, I, I believe it's just a policy.
Yeah, the way I read it was a policy.
Yeah, we don't have to run it past the A O E. I don't.
But just, I mean, that they had things that they wanted to see.
We have to just have something, yeah, approved by January 1st.
Okay, cool.
Just the smallest thing. In administrative responsibilities, number three, it says, uh, at the end of the first line, references or stereotypes, he likeness. And it should just be the likeness.
Oh, yep.
Important, especially when talking about not representing people.
Yeah, it kinda makes a little.
Unintentional, but does make a difference. Yep.
Okay. So with that edit there, I make a motion to adopt F, F 12 for the school read. I can't think.
Second reading. Yep.
There you go.
I'll say second.
Um, any more discussion than what we just had? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. So now we're moving on to F four. And this, I'm gonna let Jody talk about the next two and what our thoughts were on this.
Sure. So the first one is F four, search and seizure for interrogation of students by law enforcement or other non-school personnel. What we spoke about this is that, um, on one point, we just had the wonder, why do we have a policy for personnel that are not under direct supervision of the superintendent or the board? Uh, and so the thinking was just to dictate what happens on school grounds. But on school grounds, we follow the same rules, um, that are state mandated and federally mandated when it comes to search and seizure. So for example, we do not, um, pass students' personal belongings over to law enforcement without a warrant because that's just how things are done. Um, and so we were just thinking that maybe we didn't need this policy because we follow updated state law, um, at all times in regards to this. And again, there's no V S B A model policy here.
And, and if that law ever changed and our policy was not in line with it, then all of a sudden we have a policy we gotta fix fast.
Kind of the same. I'm gonna do two separate, but I'm gonna wanna talk about F eight too. Along the same lines of what we thought were all, you know, as a, as a school employee, as an administrator, we're all mandated reporters. And we just kinda looked at it that why do we, along the same lines, have to have a policy that automatically we are going to follow state regulations and guidelines when a situation like this occurs? So we don't wanna, didn't want to like double, I'm trying to, I can't think after eight, you guys. Jody's got seven and I got eight.
Yeah. So it's really just clarifying, like, what is policy, what is appropriate for school board policy versus, you know, administrative procedure, state regulation, federal law. And so this fell under state regulation for.
So relating redundancies?
Yes. That was my word.
I'm good till nine. We got 20 minutes.
I think the other thing too was, it was interesting that the Vermont School Board Association.
They, there's nothing. Yeah.
Away as a, as a mandated policy. And, I mean, it's not even recommended. You know, there's nothing there anymore. So.
Okay. So I'm gonna make the motion to rescind policy F four.
Hold on a second.
Any more discussion than what we've had? All in favor? Liz, oh, there she is. Okay, unanimous on that. And then I'm gonna make a motion to rescind, um, F eight.
Hold on a second.
Sam seconds. All in favor? Liz, I need your camera.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, sorry. Do we have any more discussion? And all in favor? Thank you. And then our next meeting for policy is October 11th at 5:30 with a hybrid option. And now on to buildings and grounds. And I wish Tim was here today.
Yep.
Kinda quiet. I think, uh, we've got, um, the combo coming up, um, 4th of October. I'll be putting, uh, building and grounds in the same rooms, in the same situation with financial. A lot of we do, maybe a, a large amount of money or an investment we need to win, we need to know if the money's available there. And they need to know if we're gonna be looking for something that we don't tell them until after the, uh, made, there are ways to pay for that, but it's not, not in the best type of things to do. We're trying to get ahead and talk with Stan a little bit this coming week and hopefully with Tim. The meantime, we've, we've asked him to go down through, uh, all the elementary schools in this one. And just to see what, how the building is working, what kind of control it's in. Before, we were, um, convened together as a group, in schools, um, we each, each school had its own janitor, its own lead janitor. Right now, that's not always the case. Mill Clarian has one that's there most of the day, but it's not somebody that's looking to, to do all the mechanical. And if we need to do something big, yeah, he's gonna need to, to tell us there. But we're not, uh, we gotta open it back up and allow us to get to that point where we're doing our jobs and such. But we'll, uh, we will be meeting October the 4th, uh, from 4:00 to 5:00 P. M. It'll be here in this building. Um, hey, right here in this little place. Cool. I got dibs on the seat here. So other than that, we'll, we get a little bit.
Tim is, Tim is getting up to speed fast. And he's, he's, he was up at Shrewsbury doing a site visit, walking the grounds with Kristen.
He was impressed.
We're, good to hear. We're, and you heard good things from Kim Benere about working with Tim already. Day eight, again. So we're doing some of those safety site visits. And Officer Hoffman and Jody and principals are checking buildings to make sure that we are doing everything we need to do to keep them safe and secure. And Tim is joining with some of that so that we can get him up to speed quickly on doing those school site visits that we'll try to do throughout the year. So that he's staying pretty aware of how things are looking. My message to staff last week was that I'm excited that we had some great big projects that we were able to complete in the past. Some of our energy efficiency work. I'm very excited that now we have time to pay attention to the small things. To look at, how do our buildings look like when we're approaching them? When we walk in the door, are they welcoming? You heard Kristen talk about pride. You heard Kim talk about pride. And Tim is right there thinking about, how can we be proud of our facilities? So I think that's a, a great shift in focus, timely to think about the small things. We did try to reach out to Bob Menfriede. We're waiting for a call back to continue working on sorting out the Wallingford. If there, if there's a code issue around how we're using the sinks, uh, we, we figured out that we have potable water and then faucets with non-potable water. The state is happy. Uh, but we gotta figure out that code piece. So we are still working on that. We just haven't heard back yet.
Awesome.
When's your next meeting?
October 4th.
The 4th, combined with finance. Adrian?
Oh, that's right.
Would, I know this is, sounds whiny. Um, 4 o'clock's really early and I won't be able to attend. I'd really like to come to that meeting. Is it too early for anyone else? Hey, we've got one more person. It's too early for, could we make it like at 6?
Do we have anything else on that day?
Uh, I don't think we do. I don't think we do.
Doug, it's your base meeting, so.
Yeah, Doug and Liz.
I was gonna say, Liz, you wanna chime in?
That's totally fine with me. 6 o'clock is fine.
You wanna come, right, Nick?
Oh, I would love to come.
Okay.
Yeah, the fact of the matter is.
Day normally ends for me at like 5:30, 6:00, so.
Okay.
Yeah, a 4 o'clock meeting, I have to stay basically at work to, like, late to join because otherwise I'd be driving home at that time. So 6 o'clock is fine. I'll probably still join remotely, but, um.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm same boat. If it's four, I'm here. Cause I'm not going home.
Right.
If it's later, um, and especially board meetings the next night, two nights in a row for me.
You'll be unemployed by now?
Well, you may not be. You still have the store. Okay. So in agreeance, we'll change it to 6?
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Um, community engagement.
We are going to have our next meeting Tuesday, October 11th at 6:30.
Are you doing a hybrid?
Yes, it will have a hybrid option.
Okay. And finance.
Good evening, everyone. I have the following papers for approval this evening, dated September 9th, in the amount of 500 and, I'm sorry, this is payroll, excuse me, are the following payroll, dated September 9th, in the amount of 581,817.817.64 cents. Date is September 16th, regular payroll in the amount of 8,230.30 cents. For a grand total of 590,047.94 cents. For pay orders, we have a pay order in the amount of 83,782.28 cents. We have a pay order in the amount of 471,581.58 cents. We have a pay order in the amount of 1,620.21 cents. We have a pay order in the amount of 3,292.38 cents. We have a pay order in the amount of 7,345.80 cents. And lastly, we have an additional pay order in the amount of 423.82 cents. For a grand total of 568,046.7 cents. From our student activity account, we have a pay order from Mill River in the amount of 5,257.83 cents. We have a pay order from the Shrewsbury Mountain School in the amount of 39.8 cents. And from Timmith Elementary in the amount of 144.95 cents. For a total from student activity account in the amount of 5,441.86 cents. And I move that we accept and approve these pay orders and this payroll as presented.
I second, yeah.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question and ask that someone who is in that room, determine who's voting what way. All those in favor of accepting and approving these pay orders and this payroll as presented, please raise your hand. Thank you so much. Any objections?
Nope, you're unanimous.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. And yeah, so the next meeting, the, uh, regularly scheduled finance committee of September 26th is canceled. And instead, the finance committee is meeting in conjunction with the, um, Buildings and Grounds Committee on October 4th. Is that a Tuesday, folks?
Yes.
Tuesday, October 4th. Thank you, thank you so much. And we're meeting at 6:00 P. M. So, and we'll update that. And then the next regularly scheduled meeting of the. So, and we'll update that, and then the next regularly scheduled meeting of the finance committee is, 1, 2, 3, 4, October 24th. Got it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, on to other legal business. Do we have any?
I have one really, really quick one. We had a question from community members around political signs on school property, so we, I didn't know anything about that, so I did some digging and some research, I looked at our policy, we don't have a policy that addresses that, uh, and according to, uh, Vermont government, based on statute, uh, public property owned by public schools, if the board has not adopted a rule or policy, then each candidate must ask the board for permission to place a sign. So, as we are moving into that season, um, I told that community member, we would share that publicly, so I am sharing that publicly, because I did not know that. Some of you may have known that already, but I figured it wouldn't hurt just to make sure we're all on the same page there, so...
So, has somebody asked permission?
No, nobody has asked yet, uh, but the community member was asking, what are the rules, regulations around that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we should be expecting, if anything.
'Tis the season, almost, November, yep.
One notable, going back several conversations, uh, I did a query of our board policies for the word reimbursement, and D18 is the only policy that shows reimbursement.
And what is D18?
It says travel re, it says travel reimbursement, and it goes on to say that, uh, for school business, the combination of actual cost, or, and/or per diem mileage, uh, for employees, board members, volunteers, to the, so, it goes on to spell out a couple of things in three paragraphs.
I'm not asking for a much, thank you.
We could reimburse you a night.
No, no, I'm not asking for that either.
But D-
That would be a bad thing.
Yeah.
D18, if you're interested- We tend not to do any-
We don't let the teachers do that.
Hotel reimbursement, yeah, is, is a luxury that we don't really-
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't say hotel.
Oh, darn.
It was not requested.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out, Nick.
What is it, D18?
D18.
I'm gonna have to look at that one. Um, okay, anything else? Round to agenda building.
Okay, we've got annual meeting, Adrienne, when do we need to do that, next meeting? Uh, October 5th?
You mean for, for resolutions?
Yeah, the resolutions, yeah.
We could do it at the second meeting, whichever, whichever agenda works.
Why don't we hold off?
Oh, actually, I, I won't be at the first meeting unless, unless we get back in time, and even if I do get back in time, it might be a little-
Hold that till 2nd October meeting, okay.
Thanks.
I think we have middle school, we have Mill River Middle School, is our next group coming to share to talk about the work that they're doing.
If I can just go back to like a point that Liz made when we got the athletics update, about them running out of jerseys and how we could, how could that, could we discuss that, like, kinda get what a-
We find out from Kim how many she might actually need?
If that is something they would like our help with.
The only thing we can do at this point is we can start talking about budget for next year, I think, is that, because I don't think Kim's in a bind, oh, I need them now, and I don't have money. I think she was, I'll now clarify with her, I think she was just saying, we didn't think we'd need to do this, and we had to do this, so, um, I will check with her.
Yeah, even just hearing that, yes, it was just a good statistic and not a need.
We might wanna prep for that, great.
Um, as part of agenda building, can we have a discussion at some point about maybe doing a schedule of seeing all the schools again?
Yes, we gotta get on the calendar.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, because actually Maureen asked about that, because leadership team, we were looking at this schedule again, second meeting in October is Tinmouth presentations. Do we wanna go to Tinmouth for that second meeting in October to have those presentations?
Okay, that's just my opinion, though.
Yeah, we could do, start doing some of that, I mean, get it.
That must be on, yes, so we'll do some, and then when the snow flies, like, not-
Not Shrewsbury, maybe?
No, not Shrewsbury.
Yeah, well, and-
I don't have any problem driving up there, but-
Here's what we can do, too, I can look at that, uh, schedule again, with, we're Clarendon in November, we're Mill River in December, so we, and we're Wallingford in December, we're Shrewsbury in January, so we could think about if that doesn't make sense, uh...
We can snowmobile there, we'll snowmobile there.
I've got two. I can take a couple.
So, we can-
We had, in years past, we've, we've stopped visiting other schools in snow season.
Yeah, but-
Yeah, but if it's close.
We could do Wallingford, Clarendon.
Yeah.
Could you switch the Shrewsbury and Mill River one?
Well, I wonder, let me talk to Kristen, if we could switch November, Clarendon-
Yeah.
Because if Shrewsbury could be November, I think we're safe.
Yeah, no, you won't, usually.
Well, Shrewsbury might have snow, but it's not enough to-
It's not January snow.
It's always that first snow and that last snow that gets you, though.
And it's always a, if there's a splinter coming in, then we'll be like, no, we're not going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we always have remote. Yeah.
Yeah, if we have to, because we could be fully remote still, under the state allowances.
Good thought, Matt, because you must be reading my mind, you almost said that on the phone the other day.
Uh, we would not have student updates, so that's, that October meeting is actually looking kinda light, we would have the middle school. Yeah, what else would we have on that agenda? We would not have our students.
Can we talk about our inclusion statement again?
Or actually, do we want our students actually at that meeting, and not Tinmouth for the second meeting?
Yeah, I think it's hard for them to get to-
Yeah, let's have them here and not for them to travel.
How does that sound, Dan, is that reasonable? See you in two weeks? Okay.
Yeah, and then we won't make you travel.
But you're welcome to.
Okay, cool.
Always.
Well, to Wallingford, I mean, you're right there.
Uh, other, other things we wanna look at?
Can we, um-
Two weeks from now?
Discuss the inclusion statement again?
Yeah, we can talk about that again.
How we need to maybe establish how we're gonna get it?
Yep.
Displayed.
Yep, yep.
Or what we're gonna, next steps, I don't wanna push it off again, we've already kinda done that.
Yep, no, fair enough.
Um...
Awesome.
We'll have a quick one.
Executive session?
Yes, we needed an executive session for like, three minutes.
Let me find the language.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Are we gonna do an open house with new staff?
We had talked about that, and I had talked to Deborah about doing that, and we had said tentatively-
I thought we had a date already.
Uh, we were thinking about September 26th, and I'll be honest, that's, after I talked with Deborah, it kinda fell off my radar. We were talking about the release day, the 26th, trying to do something that day, because everybody would be down here, the new teachers meet, uh, I know that's really short notice, but we could do something, uh, the afternoon of the 26th, we'll have all the new teachers in one place.
Can we do it after their open house?
Yeah, which is the 29th.
Which is the 29th, I think they're probably all prepping for the open house.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna stress them out anymore.
We could, um, October 31st.
That's Halloween.
We'd have them all in one place.
Well, so, Brian, that's a building-based day.
Oh, that is, so they're not even coming back down, yeah.
No, Deborah's the next release day, it's the 31st.
Let me, Len, and I'm sorry, that did drop off my to-do list, uh, I will check back with Deborah, and I will see, is there a reasonable time and place we can, because, what I'm hoping we don't do is we say, hey, Thursday, new teachers, here's something for you to do. You know, I know the intent is to, to meet them, and I think that's fantastic, but I know they're busy, too, so, we'll brainstorm.
Are we in Tinmouth, the first or second meeting in October?
October 19th is what we're shooting for.
Because I was gonna say, we could also do it before a school board meeting.
Yeah.
You know, do it at 5 o'clock.
That's what we've done in the past.
That has worked really well, that is what we did in the past.
So, I will talk to Deborah, and I'll, I'll see if doing the October 5th, yeah, see if that one's reasonable.
And we just have to make it optional for them.
Yeah, yep.
We're gonna order you to come and have fun.
Thank you, Len.
Smile, please smile.
No, no, please.
Uh, let's see.
Um, one of the suggestions that we were talking about, what could we do to make lives easier for school boards at the, the last VSA meeting, was a chi-chi for chairs and superintendents, that read, you know, like, ask for a motion, ask for a second, ask for discussion, executive session, what are the five or six reasons that you can go into executive session with the wording?
And it's sweet.
So, they're gonna do it.
Yay! I might have to just link in for that part.
No, you can have it in front of you in a piece of paper, you can laminate it.
Yes, and do it, and I can, yeah.
So, we need a motion, uh, that we have a finding that premature public knowledge would place the board at substantial disadvantage to discuss litigation. Anybody wanna make that motion? Okay, so moved.
I'll second it. So, you moved it, good.
Discussion.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, let's go to executive session.
Motion to go.
Oh, I am motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that, yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor? All right.
Okay, at 9 o'clock.
At 9.